Calling the Sunset Empire Transportation District Board of Commissioners to order 9:00 AM on Saturday, November 10:00 AM. November Saturday and a Saturday, November 5th. All right, Mary, I'm sure you've probably already taken the roll call because you're so good at that.
I like to get on the recording, so I'm gonna do it. Commissioner Allegria? Commissioner Withers? Commissioner Reed? Mr. McDonald? Commissioner Ossman? Commissioner Nino?
Any changes to the agenda? Seeing that, any public comments?
We don't have anybody on Zoom?
Well, I would like to take this time to thank, I'm Arla Miller from ODOT Public Transportation Division. I would like to thank the board for all they do and how supportive and as a group they work together with no inside fighting. I've seen a lot of boards that don't work together as well. And I truly appreciate what you guys do and the time that you give to the transit district.
Thank you. Hey, approval of last month's board minutes. Okay, we have a motion by Tracey McDonald and a second by Charles Withers. Is there any discussion? I have one, Mary. And under number six, Commissioner Reed, you had R E E D.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I know that's, it's. And I think that was all I had on.
People have corrected me both ways. When I put it the right way, people. Thank you.
If there's no more discussion, Mary, would you take?
Yeah. Commissioner Allegria? Mr. Withers? Mr. Reed? Mr. McDonald? Mr. Busman? Commissioner Nino?
And we actually have two seconds minutes. Page 12 for the second meeting.
Okay, then we will need to approve for the special Zoom meeting we had on September 28th. Hey, sir, I need a motion. I move to approve. Okay, thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Will we know regardless of signal that in that meeting today?
Hey, there's no discussion, Mary?
Okay, Commissioner Allegria?
Hi.
Commissioner Withers? Commissioner Reed? Mr. McDonald? Mr. Busman? Commissioner Nino? Motion passive.
Reports from the Chair and Commissioners will start with you.
Oh, well, this is actually a note I had on the minutes. Commissioner Reed had suggested it'd be nice for the board to know how to make a rapid response and contact staff if it's relevant to the weekend, as that could be put on the agenda.
You won't get a lot of the separation.
It's no functional issues. Okay, on page 10. There's, they're talking about.
Are we back to minutes?
It's not to change them, it's a question. Yeah, I'm using the comment field.
Okay.
So on page 10, in the second paragraph, infrastructure, does that include, what does it include? When you talk about infrastructure, is that? Roads, is that buses on page 10, second paragraph, stuff gets them? Or second sentence?
Well, as far as the legislative advocacy. Infrastructure would be in capital. Capital. Buildings.
Anything that requires. Use capital money.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it? That's I had a great time.
Okay, we're gonna start with you for reports.
I had a great time in Spain, Portugal, thank you.
Did you ride a bus back then?
No, because I have Spanish, so.
We have some exciting news and energy.
But I did take.
For travelers who need to get to connections.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that was exciting.
Thank you.
I don't have much. I wouldn't ask staff and Jeff particularly. City and I've passed what they call a transportation plan, it's 132 pages. I got the Cliff Notes versions of it. And I felt seeing this one statement in there, I thought I would see is that they would consult us in this plan they've come up with.
Yeah, I was involved with that plan.
You did believe it. It seemed spotty. So you already, you already worked with them on it?
Yeah, when they were going through the process, I was part of the advisory committee.
You seen the final draft against, okay, it just seems spotty. Okay, thank you.
Nothing other than I too was wanting to, you know, get some follow-up about the urgency response. And actually, I have more questions than comments, you know, so I'll add that later in the meeting.
Chrissy?
I don't have any.
Yeah, no? Nothing this time? All right, just gonna, Charles and Rebecca and I both did the forestry tour. It was very, very interesting. It was, it didn't rain on us. It was close, but yeah, but I thought it was put on really, really well. And I feel really enjoyed. It was, I had done a virtual tour two years ago during COVID. And that one, to me, seemed a lot more commercialized than this one, so I thought it was done really well. We left at 9:30, everything got back. Yeah, we got back in, we were a little late getting back.
The component bridge part was the last part, and we weren't sure how the bus was willing to get down. By the way, that was about any backing.
Slogging roads, and our bus driver was really good. The other bus driver.
Oh, I would love to add a little something to that, is that, you know, I think it was a little bit one-sided. I mean, I really do appreciate the promotion and all the work they do. But there really wasn't time to sit down. Maybe it would have been improved if there'd been opportunity to have some more question answers. Not in the field, but, you know, a little more substantive questions. Maybe we could have provided those in the time, so. I'm going to submit my input to the survey.
I did do that. But it would have been nice if they would have, if we would have come back together at the end, maybe for half hour, 45 minutes, just.
How many people participated?
There was two small buses. And the one thing, and I think Charles had done this, you know how, and I think we need to promote, promote ourselves more. They always introduce elected officials that happen to be at these, not special district elected officials. And Charles, I think he went and talked to Kevin, and I think somebody else did too. And so at lunchtime, we were introduced along with the candidates that were running that happened to be. I think we need to just continue to. No, I'm. Hurt to educate people that special.
They were very apologetic, and they did.
Just a quick comment, I think that we should look at ourselves as elected officials rather than thinking we're a separate entity that needs to have special announcements. So just saying we are.
Because we are elected officials.
Sure are.
Hey, we can move on to financial reports.
All right, I'm your friendly financial person today. Don't hurt, act me too hard a question, but might have to get back with you. Kelly is on vacation, so she's not with us today, but I'm happy to attempt to ask her a question.
Thank you. So my first question is that there only presenting September, not October financial? That's correct, or am I?
Yeah, no, that's correct.
Why is that?
Because usually we, the latter part of the month, financials aren't closed yet for October, so I guess we go to the December meeting.
All right, thank you. Then I had a question. Yeah, so like, because that's what I thought, that it's like, all right, maybe they're not done, so we'll have them at the December meeting. But then if we look on page 23, which is the credit card reconciliation. And you notice that we have numbers for September and October, like until mid-October, until the 12th. So how, why? How does that work? Like, will next month, when we get the financials for October, we get the credit card like after the 15th or?
Yeah, so what you see on here from October, that was on the most recent credit card statement, and so that's where Donna puts everything on, or is on that statement, whatever board that gets at.
So it goes by statements?
Yes.
I've noticed that. That's it for me?
This is more a concern about vehicle repairs. I know that's going to say we're in the black, okay, but that particular item, it is 62,000.
What, what line number are you referring to? Page number?
8171, page 15. And 8171 vehicle repairs. Since we have eight months to go, I would say that we need possibly have to have a supplementary, I think, something, but it's just a bit of a concern.
Yeah, and this one was, if you note on the exception report, we had to buy an engine for a bus, an old bus, which normally we wouldn't have bought another engine. This is a third engine that this vehicle has gotten. Typically, we'll, you know, when we buy a bus that has an engine, and then we'll replace it once, and we're able to do that through, our grants will allow us to give an additional engine. But beyond that, we have to pay for it ourselves out of local funds. But because of the supply chain issue and the backlog of ordering buses, it was necessary for us to actually spend the money to put another engine on this bus, so we have enough buses.
I wasn't, didn't mean to imply reckless spending. It's just, we have eight months to go, and vehicles break down, so just a one step.
And my comment would be that, what you just said, you know, if you look at total materials and services, we're actually under for the year for the whole category by 60, almost $63,000.
And also it could be, it would also increase the resale value of that bus when we try to, when we get selling. It'll have more value potentially.
Yeah, potentially, yeah.
I did have one question on page 17. The Amtrak 60 days. Behind about 3,700, is that pretty normal for Amtrak?
Well, they had been running like 90 days, but they improved some of their internal, internal processes to streamline some more, so. I'm not concerned about it. That we may have, we may have gotten that one already. Yeah, that we did. You'll see it on next month's.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
So how often does Amtrak bill? Because if they owe for 60 days but not 30 days, does that mean that they bill us like every other month or something?
No, we do a reconciliation.
Hey, I have a motion from Commissioner McDonald to accept financials. Do I have a second? Second, can I read? Any other discussions? Mary, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Yeah, Commissioner Allegria? Commissioner Withers? Commissioner Reed? McDonald? Mr. Busman? Commissioner Nino?
Moving on to continued business. Nothing under continued business. So then new business. The Transportation Advisory Committee appointments.
All right, so we currently have four seats on the tack that have expired. We did, Mary did some outreach on that via press releases, notifications on the buses, the shelters, Facebook posts, and announcements on the website. Seeking interested individuals to submit an online application for the opening. This is the first time that we had an online application, so to make it easier for people, so. Seat number one is currently held by Larry Miller, who's the executive director of the Astoria Senior Center and a longtime member of the committee. He would like to be reappointed. Seat number two was held by Patrick Preston, who had been the chair of the of the committee for the past few years. But like board members, I poached him, and we hired him as his driver. So he's, he's working for us, so he's not eligible to be on the committee any longer. Seat number three was held by Mel Jasmine, who resigned due to health issues. And then seat number four is currently held by the president of Clutchup Community College, Chris Brightmire. And he would like to be reappointed as well. We only received one application, and that's in your packet from Renee Bickmore. I had emailed her to invite her to the meeting, but I don't see her on here. But we'll recommend you that a motion be made to reappoint Larry Miller and Chris Brightmire to the tack for seats one and four, and that Renee Bickmore be appointed to seat number two. I would note that we do have another vacancy because of the death of Doug Pylant from Tillamook County Transportation District. Once they, they're in their recruitment process now, once they get a new general manager, then I'll reach out to that person and ask them to join ours, because I'm on their tack and Doug was on our end.
So would that person take seat three?
No. It was on. Seat number eight or nine.
I'm so sorry. My notebook has a name, and then you get close to it, and she talks.
So I'd like to move to reappoint Larry Miller and Chris Brightmire to the tack for seats one and four, and that Renee Bickmore be appointed to seat two.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Remind me how many seats are on the tack? Seven? So I'm trying to think, like, what are the sectors of the population that still need some representation?
So we got, we have nine seats. So Larry represents seniors. Patrick represented a human service provider, because he was working for the Employment Department with Veterans Employment. Mel was representing disabled, and that's who Renee is going to be representing. Chris Brightmire was educational institutions. And then we also have Lynn Anderson, who represents low income. Deanna, you represent the board and the district. Tita Montero represents local government, because she's a seaside city councillor. Then Doug, of course, the neighboring public transit provider. And then Nicole Williams represents seniors and disabled also. And those other seats will come up next year.
So, so we will still be vacant for seat two, which is a human services?
No, Renee is gonna fill in seat two. Seat number three will still, will be open, will continue to try to get somebody.
What is your process for recruiting, trying to find?
Getting the word out, press releases, website, Facebook, signs on the bus, signs on the shelters.
And you turn, remember meetings, announcements?
Yeah, the monthly Astoria one, I've been going, I wasn't able to go this month, so I said, when I can, I tend to.
And can you remind me again what's two, three represents?
Whatever.
Just an open seat?
Yes, yeah. There are several categories. That they can represent.
Okay, so I have a motion and I have a second. Is there any other discussion? Mary?
Since Ms. Bickmore is not here, does that suggest she's more interested or?
No, I don't get that indication.
So she'll reach out to you or something?
Yeah, yeah, I'll get ahold of her next week, let her know she was appointed, because we're gonna be setting up a meeting here shortly.
And we've been here for, at next, at next, I guess, January.
Well, she's gonna, you're appointing her today, so she'll be on.
She's an hour up close, just, just, you don't have to talk to us.
No, yeah.
Mary, could you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Allegria? Commissioner Withers? Commissioner Reed? Mr. McDonald? Commissioner Busman? Commissioner Nino? Motion passive.
Move on to the Astoria Transit Center sidewalk review.
All right, so we had been notified by the city a year ago that there were some tripping hazards out on the sidewalks along Green Drive and 10th Street. And so we had, we marked those with safety yellows brightly, so people would see that they were a tripping hazard. Some of the pads, cement or concrete pads have come up as much as an inch, and so it definitely is a safety issue. We had gotten some bids, one bid, we had one responsive bid last year, but the individual never got back with us after submitting the bid. His agreement was not acceptable to us. And so we had our attorney write a new agreement, and we never heard back from him, so. And we moved on to, got ahold of Terrafirma, and they came out and gave us a bid. Not only are they bidding on this project, but we're also going to utilize them for the putting the pad down at the bus stop down at Sunset Beach. So we can move forward with that as well. But that's, you don't need, that's, that's within my spending authority, so that's not before the board. We're just talking about the needed repairs for the transit center, and not just on Green and 10th, but there's a few spots within the plaza that need to be corrected, so they're prepared all of it. So we're recommending a motion to be made to approve the quote in the amount of $28,355 and 97 cents.
And I would still move since I'm.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Bishop Donald and the second by Commissioner Reed to approve the $28,000 repairs. Is there any comments? Commissioner Allegra?
On page 27. Says in final payment. It's on the bottom under signature. To be made upon substantial completion and on the effective date of 2021. In terms of, why can't we pay the last payment when it's finished? My mother always taught me, don't pay for something you haven't used very much. Okay, so if you go, post my signature in the one, two, three, three lines, it starts up now. Completion of each stage of the project.
What page are you on?
Okay, so page 27 and there, page, the first page of the contract. Where the paragraph that started the acceptance of contract, we're in much better explanation.
So is this standard?
This would be standard. We're gonna pay half upfront and then have a completion, and it will be completed before we pay.
Okay, then the other thing is, but that isn't what it says.
I'm the guy that, okay, checks. I'm asking you to trust me.
Now, on page, our page is page 31, and we're page five. Commissioner Reed's lead, and then it's the paragraph that starts out, this proposal is based on visual inspection. So it's actually the second paragraph.
So down from limited warranty on phrase six. Under limited warranty, takes second place down.
Okay, yes, and the question I have is a concern, a he and she concern too. This proposal does not include landscaping or repairs indirect damage to the structure that normally and naturally who would put into that word, flows from performance of the work. So is there a way to protect landscaping or have them pay a bit? You know, sometimes, and I won't name names, contractors can go a little bit rough when it comes to landscaping things. That's part of the, the outcome of the job.
Right. They, they will get ahold of us, because if, if they find something, once they've torn up that, that section of concrete, that would be an issue, they would begin with us.
Okay.
Before they move forward on.
And the other I highlighted. Oh, yes. Okay, back to construct page 29, we're on page three, under custom will. Okay, that's number three. Okay, that's number three. So they will not remove dirt from job site unless noted in contract.
If there's any dirt that has to be removed.
Then they'll talk to you and say, do you want it removed?
Yeah, we would just work with maintenance.
Okay, then on additional notes, number two. Last part, additional charges will be added based on scope of reports or requirements. Is there something that I missed? I don't really see what I have read in my lifetime, what I would consider a scope of work? So what, or is there, did I miss?
Which number are you referring to? Number two?
Number two.
The city engineer isn't requiring a full geotechnical report. So that was kind of moved.
Oh, no, no. Additional charges will be added based on scope of reports or requirements there. So I'm asking, where's the scope or the requirements?
There is no geotechnical report, so thus there is no scope of work for that item.
Oh, so it's actually?
That's referring to a, yeah, specifically a geotechnical report.
I just want to comment that, that you have to remember the history of this particular slab of concrete, how it was down in a hole. And not much dirt or support was for those outside. So it was inevitable that we would have some type of crack. So.
It's real sandy in that area.
Yeah, it's very sandy, very, just like Phil.
It used to be the river.
Some parts of it would like to come back there.
So my question is that the, the repairs are only on sidewalks, not on like the actual road that the buses transit?
That's correct.
Only the sidewalk?
Just the sidewalks, yeah.
It sort of makes a, a turn and loop thing, if that's the sunset location.
What's that?
It sort of makes a, it's never, there's never, the stop's not really, it's on the street, but it's not on the street.
I, I, I'm not, we're just doing, we're just talking about the sidewalk repairs and where people walk through the transit plaza.
Okay, so, so if I look at the map on page twenty-eight, contract page number two. So then, if we look at this, let's, like, structure, that's the building.
That's the building, correct.
And so the, the entrance to the building where people come in is like around here.
Right, yeah.
Right? So while they're fixing that, will our riders be able to access or like, that's not going to be blocked?
No.
Okay. All right, that's it from me. Then I just had one question. On the first page, the total price is twenty-eight thousand fifty percent is due to start and upon, and amount due upon installation, I look at that as, at the very end, is twenty-eight thirty, but that's not.
Yeah, that's what Pamela was referring to, substantial completion.
All right, I'm moving with everything I have left then. I'm just, oh, Deanna, go ahead. When, if we approve this, when would construction start primarily?
They're ready in charge. As we give them the go-ahead.
That's a good sign.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt. Think Pamela had one more?
I would just say, is the question of construction and sometimes when sidewalk has been repaired, that the curb height has been lowered or not the same as it was so that you have water coming where you normally wouldn't, so is there a would that be an overview of somebody?
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the curb's not going to change.
That's what I wanted.
Yeah, that's the curb, the curb height won't. Because it's not like we're turning out the whole sidewalk, it's just a spot there.
I just wondered the question, are you still looking for someone to straighten?
Working for them?
I mean, substitutions are done.
No. No, that's Arlo's job. They're an interim manager who's their operations superintendent. So he's in charge right now through the recruitment of, of a new GM. But Arlo's been spending time there helping them out because they lost their finance person also.
Oh. Two.
All right, Mary, would you take a roll bubble, please?
Okay, Commissioner Allegra.
Hi.
Commissioner Withers. Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Commissioner McDonald.
Hi.
Commissioner Booth Smith.
Hi.
And Commissioner Nino.
Hi.
Motion passive.
Next on our agenda is the Memorial Hospital memorandum of understanding.
This, this is a renewal of an existing memorandum of understanding that we have for transportation services in the case of a need to evacuate people from a hospital. We can use our vehicles to safely transport them to the evacuation site. I did in my report say that I would have a clean copy of today's. I was out sick all last week and I did not make that finalized. But the only things that are going to be changing on it are the, the dates on page thirty-six under number five. That'll change to next year, or maybe a two-year contract, I'll look at that.
It gives a two-year.
Yeah, it is a two-year. And then the cost per hour will be that ninety-five dollars, adding a five percent increase to that, that ninety-five dollars. And then on page thirty-six and thirty-seven, we'll have a new listing of vehicles because we don't have all those vehicles now. We've lost some of them and we've bought some other ones, so those will be the only changes that, that are in place.
I'm sorry, what did you say about my five dollars?
It'll be, it'll go up by five percent.
But you said that.
So it's a dollar now. So ninety-nine seventy-five. So I'm going to round that to a hundred dollars.
Entertain a motion to approve the MOU, and when you put the changes that Jeff has just made.
I would change.
Even changes. I'll second. We've got Deanna to second. Is there any other discussion? I have some questions. Rebecca? I would like to know if this is ever, you have ever indicated this.
If, if we've ever, if they've ever used us? No.
Well, then that answered my second question, is if, you know, was there good coordination with the hospital and the incident commander? So I guess we'll find out.
We'll find out one day.
And then we brought, this is aside from the MOU, but it brought up something for me, which was a question that, what do we coordinate with CIRF? You know, and the other incident commanders for the county and for emergency services, and also with, in terms of evacuations or any special accommodations that would arise, and we may not even have anticipated, and also evacuation to kids in schools and coordinating with school district services. So I'm wondering, you know, in the bigger scope.
In, in, in the bigger scope, when the emergency operations center is activated by the county, we'll be represented there. It would either be myself or our chief operating officer will be embedded there to coordinate evacuation thing. Because again, it's one of those things that were kind of not thought about ahead of time, but if we have boots on the ground, we're there, we'll make sure they, they get the assistance they need. And, and we have that MOU in place with the county.
And it would be interesting to, to see that plan with the county, you know, I mean, what the county's plan is.
You can access that online.
All right, and, and and then is there any language about how we match, what our purpose be? Are you a part of that plan?
We are a part of that, yes. And we have that MOU with the county, emergency management, for that very reason. So it's memorialized and then we're eligible for reimbursement to, to FEMA funds.
I think that, you know, I will say myself, but I think that I really want to be informed about that. And I encourage all of us to do that because you never know when people ask us, they know that we're commissioners and, you know, that would be something that, good information in relation to what we, if we were ever asked. Thank you.
I just wanted, somehow if we could amend this also to authorize the board chair to sign. Because this agreement does require her signature.
I just put that in there. Oh, yeah, no, I, I put that in there. Authorize the board chair designing.
Chuck. And probably, I've been a part of these for a long time, these sort of things are disaster, probably. Have they practiced this? Usually they go these run-throughs and they've had a run-through using us.
So we know. We did, when we, when we put together the memorandum of, of understanding, we did actually do a tabletop exercise at the transit center.
I did not, in real time, you've not done a real town on the ground.
No.
No.
We'll find out what happened.
Let's hope we never have.
Just adding to Charles' concern is that, you know, during the break, Gail communications with Neil and has there been a discussion with the emergency providers about what happens if everything goes down?
You know, I don't know if they've had continued discussion on that. I have, that I don't know.
That's when the ham radio.
Right. Yeah, and that really prompted a lot of, lot more people to get ham radios. So that web of communication is much larger, larger than it was back during great coastal scale. But they, we relied completely on them because they were the only ones that could communicate with anybody.
Is there a list of ham radio?
I don't know.
There's a organization, so what's the local?
Sunset group empower, sure, ham radio.
So would that be a suggestion to get to CMH and Sunset?
Well, the county has them folded into their emergency operations plan.
Yeah. I, I, that was good experience. I was working in vetics in the world, so remember that one.
How about you? Where, which one should I pick first? So following up on the MOU that we also have with the county, with please remind me what we have with the county. Is it that we also land vehicles and drivers?
Yes.
So would there be a conflict, like if something terrible happens and we have our MOU with CMH and the county, is there enough to go around for both or like what, what would be?
Absolutely not. There would not be, it would be prioritized through the, through the county, through emergency operations.
So then wouldn't we be defaulting our MOU with CMH? Why not?
It's, it's based on the, the amount of vehicles that we have. We can only do so much. I will tell you though, that if, if there's something big and there needs to be an evacuation down in the hospital, EOC is going to put that right at the top.
Yeah.
Because they're a vulnerable population, so that's, that would clear.
So because it's a reimbursement kind of system with them, we wouldn't be defaulting, right? Because that goes priority, we go with the county's directions first.
And, and if I'm there, we're going to tell the county prioritize the hospital.
Got it. All right, okay, cool. Then on page thirty-six, under terms, item B, it says, this agreement will be renewed automatically unless terminated pursuant to the terms here. Each renewal would be for a twenty-four month period. So if it's renewed automatically, do we, do we get to vote on it every, like, how does that work? It says it's automatic.
We vote on it every two years.
But we're changing it right now, so it's not renewed automatically?
Because we're going to change it before the expiration date.
Ah, so we just make adjustments, but it keeps renewing?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
And if it, for some reason, slipped through the trap, it automatically, whatever.
Got it, yeah. If we hadn't been able to meet or whatever, it was automatic. And then in that sense, it wouldn't be updated, like the, the the five percent would, would happen?
It would have been.
Because it's already.
It's built in there.
Then my last question, under page thirty-seven, right after we listed our vehicles, it says staff, it says twenty-three operators. Are those drivers?
Yes.
Yes.
You're not counting in the driver, are you?
Pardon?
You personally know are not included in the driver.
I'm not allowed to drag buses.
So then if we have twenty-three operators, three supervisors and three maintenance.
And that operator number will be updated as well.
Yeah, because that's what I was thinking is like, do we have enough staff?
No, I don't think we have, right, I don't. What are some?
Mary, so Mary will be driving the bus. Mary will be driving the bus.
We could drive one of the small ones.
She's a good Ben.
I could drive one of the small ones, too.
And then the supervisors would be kind of like management decisions or coordinators? That's a different meaning.
One, any of these things, it probably doesn't address, maybe in there, not just me. I've been to these disasters, once a big FEMA shows up, they, they, they say they're in charge and everything, all these advocates.
They will take our vehicles.
Exactly. We had a plan back, we had a hundred year flood and, okay, we do this, and then FEMA came and said, screw it, I'm going to reach for it. And I'm guessing that would happen in that sort of.
Yeah, and there's a really interesting story. I don't know if you've been to a transit conference where Dwight Brushhour?
Brushear.
Brushear, Dwight Brushear, who's the transit manager down at the city of Wilsonville. He was, he was that guy that during Katrina, he went and got all the buses.
Yeah.
He's got a hell of a story to tell.
So cool.
You have no choice.
That's, that's it.
Yeah.
It's like when the Marines land.
I still get goosebumps.
Yeah.
I mean, it is a story.
See, and we're really fortunate that Dwight's here in the state of Oregon because he, I mean, he, he dealt with Katrina.
Cool.
And evacuation, so.
Nothing.
May I make a quick comment?
Sure.
So if the emergency localized only to Astoria or Clapton County, all Jeff would have to do is let me know that he needs more buses to help, and if they can get here, we will call out to other bus agencies and have them bring their buses up to help out.
Right, and we, and we did that during the wildfires a couple of years ago.
Yes.
I mean, we were constantly on standby, you know, whether it was Lincoln County, which we had, we couldn't get there unfortunately because of the fires. But we were also on call for clappings as well, so we do that in order to work together.
One question regarding FEMA, would it help, that's not the word, would it help for coordination to give FEMA these plans?
FEMA has the county plan.
Okay, and this is important for any.
This particular one is not because this is just directly with the, with the hospital. And, you know, it's not every time the EOC is going to be activated for the hospital. The hospital may say that they may have some sort of natural gas leak and they need to evacuate their building, like now. That's when this would come into play, outside of the county-wide emergency.
Okay.
Anything else, Mary?
But we have same kind of contract still with Clapton Care.
Yes.
So we do have that too.
Yeah.
With the care center.
For the same type of.
And I've almost seen that one since I've been on the board, so is it renewable or is that maybe?
I have to go back and pull that one.
Make sure that it's updated on touch.
A side note, Columbia County had a nursing home that caught fire.
Right. Right.
And the, the transit was called out to help. Get those people out of there. Um, so it's, it's hard to say when you'll be called on, whether it's a fire, a natural gas leak, whatever.
And I would hope, I would assume that even if we didn't have an MOU in place with them, if they called and asked for help, we would.
Absolutely.
More than. Be willing to.
Definitely.
So.
Hey, there's no other discussion, Mary, would you do a roll call for us please?
Commissioner Alagria.
Hi.
Commissioner Withers. Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Mr. McDonald.
Hi.
Mr. Bushman.
Hi.
Mr. Nino.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Everyone? Next on our agenda would be correspondence.
No correspondence.
Um, executive director's report.
Right, so, um. You see the ridership for September, we cycled from uh last year when we kept service on September first, so now we're going against those numbers. Um, so we did, did have a fifty percent increase for the month of September. Also noted in there that both the connector route remained very strong with excellent increases, that's both the Lower Columbia Connector. And the Pacific Connector, which is the weekend route one oh one that goes between Astoria and uh Cannon Beach, so very, very pleased with those numbers. Um. The uh Lower Columbia Connector, we had nine hundred and twenty-seven rides in September. And that actually gets down, I think the previous few months, we hit a thousand riders each month. Um, I know that in October, uh, that we just completed, we again exceeded a thousand riders, so very happy with that. Um, so I put in here also, in, in talking about the uh, uh, Lower Columbia Connector. Um, we had discussions about what if? What if we were to uh add a stop to that route in Portland? And after going to Union Station, what if we went to the airport?
Yeah.
So we have so many people that, that ride the bus that um are going to the airport. And if, if they ride our route, they have to go to Union Station, then they have to get on a MAX train. Go across the river to the Rose Porter stop, then they have to get off that train, get on another train. If you're carrying luggage, it's not, not very conducive.
Yeah.
So we, we think that we can really blow up ridership with that, so I turned in a letter of interest and then we'll be applying for that through discretionary, uh, stiff discretionary funds. This uh, this cycle, so. Keep your fingers crossed.
I think that's, and I can attest to that, because the youngest daughter and I did that in May. And the luggage thing, because, and we were only going to be gone for about four days, so both of us are fairly light packers. But it's still for an old lady, was it kind of a pain in the ass?
Right.
And it's hard to figure out. It, it is somebody who doesn't kind of ask around or did, you know, gets a little, because I did it once. And then my mom wanted to do it, and I thought, when my mom is our resourceful person, but I'm like. Do you know what, you know, like, it's gonna be a lot of directions, asking, crossing, it's.
Well, and if I remember right, you got your ticket for MAX over here, but the next stop was a block away.
Yeah.
And so, I mean.
At least a block.
The daughter and I asked a lot of questions, so we got the tickets and we're all happy, we think we're where we're supposed to be, and then somebody else says, so where are you guys going? Oh, you need to be way over there, so.
So, yeah.
You can get on here and get off at the airport.
Wow, that would, that would wonder that, yes.
Yes.
So, and I ought to help you with this, because the question that I had. Um, you know, as far as the federal programs, fifty-three eleven F is an inner-city uh route, um, funding for inner-city routes. And. It's specific, you can't, you can't set up a route to go from like Astoria to the airport.
Yeah.
But when she checked with um ODOT staff, Patrick Capri, who runs the program. He said, you can add a stop to the existing route, and it's like, that's it.
So would that mean that uh somebody could get on that bus at Union Station? And go to the airport, would they, or do they have?
Sure, sure, they could, they could stop, they could get on at any of our stops all the way through Columbia County. Because we'll handle the same amount of stuff, so we're going to be helping Columbia County drivers also.
Yeah.
Uh, by giving them, you know, another, another level of service.
And, and with me just going, I helped my granddaughter move from LA to Phoenix a couple, three weeks ago. And I wanted to take the bus, and of course my flight's weird times too, but I ended up paying for parking. Then if I could have taken the bus and it would have been that nice, easy, right to the airport. I could have saved a hundred bucks really easy just to.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, um, so that's the connector, I'm still learning about the big buses. Uh, routes, but the one that goes twenty-six, that was the union.
Back close to.
Station also.
Yes.
But it. But it wouldn't, but it does, as far as it goes.
Yes.
They both.
You can transfer stops, like the Beaverton bus stop, so you can take the MAX line from Beaverton to.
Just one, one MAX train, yeah, that's more.
So how does that work with your proposal?
That's a totally separate route, it's not part of our, our.
And the other thing is, since we just took the uh, oh Columbia, uh, back to Astoria, is storage of luggage. So some of our luggage travel horizontally with us, and so is their proposal to retrofit buses so you don't have luggage flying over there.
Yeah, and we've got two buses that will be taking, should be taking delivery by the end of December at the latest. That has a separate luggage compartment, it's actually in the back. And our motor coaches that we run, they have the under seat. Just under.
Call that the Lower Columbia Airport.
Yeah.
They have, right.
So, please remind me, uh. Our lower connector, lower Columbia, it goes up.
Thirty.
Highway thirty, it stops in a few places in Columbia County, and then it goes. Down five?
No, it goes, it, it, it goes, the last stop in Columbia County is Scappus, and from there it goes to Union Station.
Cutting from like, like through a smaller road.
To downtown, downtown Portland.
So then to go to the airport, if it starts cutting down and gets to Union Station, it would go like back on the highway or like which route?
There's actually a few different ways to get to the airport from Union Station, and really that'll be up to the driver. Um, to check real-time traffic to see which is the best route to get there. Because it depends on, it depends on the time of day.
Yeah.
Because there's, there, there, we go there three times a day, one of those times between Union Station and or Portland Airport. Is a little bit longer just because of traffic patterns, um, but otherwise, it's, it's a pretty quick shot.
So that would be great that they have choice.
Yeah.
We're not stuck with a, you know, a specific route.
Because there's no other stops between Union Station and.
Yeah, cool.
So then would it come straight back from the airport, or would it go back to Union Station to pick up anybody back to Union Station? So.